is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Our next order of business is our student performance from the Southeast Middle Strings.
Hello, good evening. And we are here with the Southeast Middle School Strings Group. And we have two violins, one viola, and our teacher, Ms. Batts, who will be playing the cover today. The first piece that you will hear us play, and the only piece that you will hear us play, will be Corral by Johann Schott. We hope you enjoy.
That was just wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Our next order of business is special recognitions. First, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer, will recognize the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Educator of the Year.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus, and members of the board. It is with great excitement that we can honor and recognize our educators. And I have already forewarned them, we get a chance to gush over them for all the work that they do for just a moment before we ask them to come forward. Our first educator for this evening is Desi Yaya. Desi serves as a curriculum and behavioral support teacher at Bolton Elementary in our K-5 classrooms. She embodies the spirit of an educator that centers students first. Her room is a place where students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs thrive and grow. Desi is committed to excellence for her students and serves as a school leader. Her classroom is a haven that embodies the use of structure and support to her learners in the acquisition of skills necessary to access the educational environment. In the face of complicated and unique situations, she constantly seeks out research and support to assist the learners in her room. Desi's spirit, dedication, and commitment is a breath of fresh air. And we are beyond lucky to have her as a teacher in our district. And it is with much honor that we recognize her as the 2223 Educator of Excellence. Desi Yaya, please come forward. And tonight, Ms. Yaya is supported by her Assistant Principal, Ms. April McBride, and her family and friends and colleagues here to support her. Congratulations on your honor, your very pride. Our second educator honoree for this afternoon is the Human Relations, oops, I'm so sorry, is Ms. Norene Martinez. Ms. Martinez has been, is recognized by the Human Relations Commission. They established the Young Dreamers Award 14 years ago as a way to encourage young adults ages 18 to 40 to get involved in philanthropic efforts in their communities, much in the same way that Dr. Martin Luther King envisioned. Each year, one man, one woman, is recognized for being a tangible difference in the lives of those who otherwise might have been overlooked, ignored, or disadvantaged. Winston-Salem was an important location in King's career as an activist, and the Human Relations Council takes care to ensure that his legacy lives on through contemporary advocates. The goal is to encourage young adults to participate in philanthropic, altruistic community involvement that is in the spirit of how Dr. King lived and encouraged others to live. Denise Adams, Mayor Pro tempore Winston-Salem, said this year's female honoree, Norene Martinez, who supports the Winston-Salem Forsyth County English Learner's Parent Engagement, is responsible for helping students and families whose first language isn't English as they navigate situations like considering childcare options, setting up healthcare permissions, scheduling classes, or anything else that might require interpretation. I am so lucky to have her as a part of the Instructional Services Division, and her spirit and commitment to parent, educator, and support for all is embodied in the reason why she is selected as the Young Dreamers awardee for our county. Please come forward, Norene.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. The instructions were on the sheet as you signed up. And the most important rule to remember is that we ask you to be kind and respectful. No, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personal information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. I would also like to request that if you are on the list to speak, please sit in the aisle seats closest to the podium. Thank you. First speaker is Angela Levine.
Hi.
Hi.
I am here to talk about the Habitat Partnership with the Career Center that's on the agenda. First, I want to applaud the district and the board for considering such an amazing experiential learning partnership for our CTE students. This is exactly the kind of hands-on opportunity we need more of in our district. We all know that not every high school student will go on to attend a four-year university, nor should they. But with partnerships like this, we have an opportunity to provide students with exposure to alternatives that can offer good-paying jobs with career potential after they get out of high school. Imagine being one of these students who gets to say at the end of the project that they helped build an actual home that a family is going to live in. I think that is just so amazing. This partnership is ideal in many ways, but in particular, I love the creative way it is structured so that the funding that the district puts in comes back to the district once the home is sold and can be used to fund the next home-building project. Creative partnerships, experiential learning, and opportunities for hands-on work, we need more of these, please. I encourage the board and district to continue seeking impactful approaches to providing education for all kinds of students, and look forward to hearing more about this partnership as well as others in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Katie Sonnenlee.
Hello, I'm Katie Sonnenlee, and I'm here speaking as an individual tonight. I am excited about the opportunities that the foundation that you all are discussing may bring to the community. As someone who's both been on the nonprofit side, writing grants and begging for funding, and someone who now works, has worked for a few foundations now, I know how important that partnership can be, the public-private partnership. I also just want to make sure that we keep the most important things at the center, which is the students, and making sure that this, any money raised is put into this system in an equitable way, focused on the schools and the students who need the most. There's a lot of good research out there about how to do philanthropy well, and I've seen frankly both sides. I've seen philanthropy done really damaging and really well. So I want to make sure that this is done really well, because that's what our district needs, right? And I also just wanted to make sure that whatever projects come out of this, or whatever gets funded, that we're really listening to community, and that we're really listening to what people know that we need. There's a ton of research out there about what works and like what doesn't work. And some of that research has happened here, like the Latham Way in the 90s and different projects like that. So really looking at what the community wants and needs, and not just assuming what the community needs, I think is very important. And also, trust-based philanthropy is going to be very important for people to believe in this project, believe it can move forward and be beneficial for the people who are often ignored by systems, including philanthropy in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. The first item showing in the PowerPoint, I know that this was publicized last week, but our communications team received 33 Gold, Silver, and Bronze level awards at our state meeting last week. From what I have been told, it was the most awards in the state out of all the school districts. So congratulations to them. Also, this month, this month, we're celebrating many different things. Last time, we talked about a few. Today, we're going to talk about Love the Bus Month. So we just want to publicly recognize all of our transportation team, from those behind the scenes, the mechanics and the maintenance crew that make sure our buses are working, to those that are driving them, to the corridor supervisors and everybody else. You know, we have, we have had challenges, but they are regularly putting their heads together and trying to address those challenges. And the good news around our bus drivers, we have about 40 drivers right now that are future drivers that are in the, the cycle of getting their license. Some have already been processed, and they're just moving on. So hopefully, very soon in the near future, it's a process. It's not an easy process to become a driver. And so hopefully, we will get those vacancies filled, and we'll be in a better place at the school district. But it's, it's a big operation, so I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our transportation team. It is also Current Technical Education Week, so another shout out to all of our teachers and staff that are supporting our students in our pathways and other CTE classes. This, these numbers here, and I want to make, Kim is right in the audience, so Kim, make sure I'm right here, but currently, 10,000 of our middle schoolers are taking advantage of CTE programs, and in high school, 10,859. We have about 46 pathways. Got that right too, Kim? She's nodding. That's good. And 46 pathways, and we're adding three new next year, and then two the following year. So really excited about current technical education and how that's going to continue to expand in our district and serve even more children, more of our students. United Way, on March 1st, we've got, our team is, has been nominated. We had no idea until we found out about this, but Dr. McMillan and Dr. Cato will be heading to a state award through the United Way. Our United Way of Forsyth County nominated our school district in the category of leading through the diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. And so, more to come about that, but thank you, Dr. McMillan and Dr. Cato, who will be representing the school district on all the work they did related to our Code of Character Conduct and Support. And then also, this month is random, well, this week is random acts of, oh my goodness, Random Acts of Kindness Week, February 13th through 17th. And it's really exciting. I see, if you get out in schools this week, you're going to see lots of celebrations and lots of kids doing great things for each other and for the adults, and same with the, the adults for each other. Today, I was at one school, and I said, why are all these cars lined up in the, already, it was like 12 o'clock in the afternoon, and all these cars were lined up already in the car line. It was an elementary school, and I said, why are all these cars here already? Are they, do they get here this early to avoid the traffic? And she said, oh no, it's called, it's Valentine's Day. And so this week is just that, the kindness week, and it's being celebrated across the district. So I hope that all of our people that took time on Valentine's night to come to a board meeting, pick up your box of hearts and enjoy that. They're outside by the, by the table, so hopefully you'll take those home this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is discussion items. First, Rhonda Mays, Director of Parent Engagement, will discuss the MOA with the City of Winston-Salem.
Good evening. As what was already stated, I'm here to discuss the MOA with the City of Winston-Salem. Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, the Board, Superintendent McManus. The City of Winston-Salem and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is looking at having a partnership where we will have three youth mentoring programs that the city will bring forward here in our district, working with our students. The program's aim is to prepare youth and teens to succeed in school and to prevent youth violence within the community. The programs will help combat the impacts of the COVID-19. As we know that with COVID-19, there were, was a lot of isolation, and our students were not together and in our schools. And so we got to get back to figuring out how to work together within our schools and to solve problems. And there are three succinct programs that they're looking to bring forward to the district, and it's not of any cost to the district at all. The City of Winston-Salem will be picking up any costs related to each of these programs. The first one is Chop It Up. And in this program, it will be like a program where the students would come together and talk about current events or different issues that they are being confronted with. They can anonymously put on a piece of paper a concern or issue, and then that will be spoken about in the group. And the facilitator will give direction and help the group to process through the concerns that are brought up by the youth in the group. We will have around 12 students in the group, and the group will meet one to two times a week at each of the school locations. The next program will be Stay Fresh Initiative. This program will deal with issues related to student self-esteem, self-awareness, and it will have barbers giving haircuts and nail techs for our young ladies, or even our gentlemen who may want a manicure. So, and it will work on their self-esteem and to combat some of the issues that can arise because of that. Our goal is to have eight schools involved in this program, and they will rotate through these schools once a month. And then the last program is after-school boxing. Now, you say boxing, we're not talking about them boxing each other. There will not be any of that taking place. But all of, everything that's connected with having some self-discipline and problem-solving, as well as getting rid of some excess frustration and energy in a positive way. And again, the City of Winston-Salem is taking care of all the expenses related to each of these three mentoring programs. And we also have Bryce Sherman here with us this evening from the City of Winston-Salem. So my recommendation is for the board to approve this partnership with the City of Winston-Salem at this time. Any questions?
Yes, just a few, Ms. Mays. So I want to go back, if we can, to the slide, the first slide regarding the Chop It Up, the Chop It Up Initiative. So the, the three volunteers from the city that will facilitate these conversations, are they, what type of volunteers will they be?
Now, this is not a therapeutic program.
Right.
This is building relationship and doing some basic problem-solving and decision-making.
Right.
And they will, matter of fact, Mr. Sherman will be actually the person who will be facilitating that.
Right. And so the, so is that to say that the volunteers for the, won't, they won't have any type of specialized, it will just be people who want to volunteer for this work? Like, what is the, if someone, what is the, I guess, the qualification, if anything, for one of these volunteers who will help facilitate these discussions?
Okay. Mr. Sherman?
Good afternoon, everyone. Wasn't expecting to come up here and speak, but I will to answer your question. So this Chop It Up program that we're referring to, does it mean?
Yeah.
Right there. All right, the Chop It Up program that we're referring to will be supervised by myself, so I'll be the one going inside there. It's going to be me and probably an admin or something of that nature. So it's all through me. Now, the volunteer parts, we will allow volunteers in the future to come in, but there'll be more city employees, and they're just going to give feedback. So they're not licensed therapists or anything like that, but they're just more giving feedback on advice and things of that nature, what the kids are talking about.
Okay.
So no specific like qualifications.
Okay, that's fine. And then my second question is about the, the next slide. So one of the first things I read that kind of stood out to me regarding the, the haircuts and the nails, well, maybe it's the next, the forward, the next slide after that one. So I-
These are licensed barbers and technicians.
Well, yeah, I got that part. What I, what I, what I had questions about is, it says students should not miss more than 15 minutes of class. And I have never had a haircut or a nail appointment that has been 15 minutes. So I guess I'd like some more clarification about the types of services that are offered.
Yes, so most of the kids nowadays, they're just this new hairdo, they just grow it out, and you just line it up. So it's really, really quick. Ninety percent of the kids in Forsyth County schools, they're just growing their hair out, whether it be dreads, they just need a quick lineup, and that is all it is. So these barbers, barbers take a long time because they want you to, you know, say, they're just upping the price a lot. They really, they can really do your hair, no lie. This is how they work. They can really cut your hair in about 10 to 15 minutes, but they're going to talk, they're going to do all the extra stuff to really, to basically, like, you know, you're paying $80, you're really paying for 15 minutes of service, and they're going to talk and do other things with other types of service. So they can actually get it done. They just add on all this extra requirements and things. Oh, let me go over here, let me go play with my phone. But in reality, they can get their done in about 15, 10 to 15 minutes. But again, when you're in a salon or barber shop, they're just going to add time just doing random weird stuff, you know. So yeah, that's how it is. But they can get it done. These barbers do it all the time. I see it all the time. So we're just bringing in barbers, local barbers, that can come cut these kids' hairs, give them a fresh lineup, build their self-confidence, build their self-esteem, make them feel better about themselves so they can perform better in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm going to flip back to the Chop It Up slide. You might want to stay up here for this. So the slide said one to two times a month. When you were presenting, you said week. Was that, is it going to be weekly or monthly?
Ideally, this is going to be, we're trying to visit these schools once or twice a week. That's what we're trying to do. So we're trying to go once or twice a week. We feel if we do it once or twice a month, it's not really as effective. So what I'm trying to do, and again, this is myself going to these schools, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to be that person. I'm committing to once or twice a week, whatever the schedule allows me with that principle. If they can allow me to come there twice a week, we're going to make sure we do that so we can make sure we're effective with these kids. We just don't want to come in and do a program. A lot of these kids, they see people come in, do it once a month, they'll never see them again. We're wanting to be effective in what we're doing. We're going to meet with them twice a week. We'll talk to them. They can talk about anything, as she said. They can write down what they're going anonymously on a paper. We'll discuss it, and after that, we'd like to talk to the teachers. Just make sure they're doing the same thing, and we're going to continue to meet with these kids each time to, again, to make sure what we're doing is helpful.
Okay, I like that. I like that better, weekly versus monthly. I really think it's important for it to be nailed down. Not, not that I'm going to try to, but I am committed to. Because again, same thing with not being there but one time a month.
Correct.
Being committed to these, to this, if it's going to be one time a week, if two times a week is too much, that's okay.
Right.
But we need to really nail down, okay, I'm committed to being in there once a week, or I'm committed to being in there by month, whatever it is. I really feel like you've got to nail that down and be committed to what you're going to do.
Correct. And I'm sorry to cut you off. So I am committed. What I'm saying is the principals, if they allow me to do those two days, then I will do it. So I'm committed for that. I told them I could do one or two. Just let me know what works best for their schedule. But again, I am personally committed. The City of Winston-Salem, we're committed. Now, it's just really on the principals, if they can give me two days to meet with these children.
So what do we need to do on our end to ensure that he can make his commitment work?
Well, I believe, so Bryce, when you first came up with this idea, these ideas, which are incredible, thank you so much, Bryce. You actually spoke to principals and at one of our meetings, and they actually then completed a survey, and many of them were interested. So as far as making it work, there are so many ways to do that. We'll just make sure we, our team meets with the principals, again, as a follow-up, once this is approved. And I mean, it can be, if, it could be in lunchtime, there's so many times, it could be right at the beginning of the day. They just need to work out the times. I do not think anyone's going to be opposed to, let's commit to two days a week, because you're right, consistency is really important. And the kids, if they're expecting it on Tuesdays at 10, I'm meeting with Bryce, then we need to do Tuesdays at 10, we're meeting with Bryce. So I think it's just a matter of our staff meeting with principals as a follow-up to this night, and then set the schedules.
Correct. Yeah, so we do have, like- So, we do have, like you said, when I spoke here before, principals did sign up for the program. So, there was a lot of principals that had showed interest in it. So, again, like I said, I am committed. The city of Winston-Salem, we are committed. We just need to make sure we get those schedules down, pack with the principals. If they allow us to come two days, then that'll be great.
So, how many schools would this be offered? And I'm just...
So, right now, I believe it's three, or is it, is it two or three? I think we have two or three.
Yes. Currently, for Chop It Up, we have three schools. Our goal is eight. Once we get the volunteers cleared, it will be, our goal is eight. Right now, we have three.
So, one to two times a week at eight schools?
But that's having three facilitators. Right now, there's one facilitator.
Okay.
Right. So, that's why we need more people.
Yeah. Okay, and then I have a question about the boxing program. Will that be open to both boys and girls?
The principals are the ones who, or they designate, will be choosing who participate. But yes, it would be open to both boys and girls.
Good, thank you.
Which, which schools, like the specific schools, are the programs going to be housed at? Do we know?
Right now, again, until we get more people on board. Right now, Chop It Up will be at Flat Rock, Smith Farm, and Mineral Springs Elementary. Stay Fresh will be at Carver, Winston-Salem Prep, Philo Hill. And the after-school boxing is at Paisley. We looked at our priority schools and, as well.
But also, principals had to, in the, like, principals had to indicate that they were interested?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Carol Montague-Davis will give us an update on the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Collaborative Education Foundation.
Good evening, board.
And Dr. Wilkins.
I'm just doing a quick kind of intro, just to kind of take us back a little bit. So, back in October of last year, we presented the idea about moving forward with the possibility of a foundation to support our school district. And in that conversation, we talked about the fact that we've had so much support and investment over the years through our local foundations, through various grants from the Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust, the Z. Smith Rentals Foundations, and the Winston-Salem Foundation. Most recently, in 2015, was an investment in educator professional development with the Peer Project that lasted until 2020. And then Project Impact launched in between as an additional support to our educators focused on literacy outcomes. Project Impact sunsetted officially in June of 2022. And from that conversation, a lot of our talks were about the COVID funds, the COVID funds through the support relief funds, through the elementary and secondary relief fund, ESER, as you hear us talk about quite a bit. Our ESER funds will expire in summer of 2024. And at that point, we will still be at a need for continued investment in public education to support community initiatives, to support our students in our schools, and to support the ongoing work ahead to support our students. With that said, we need a sustainable partnership that will help to invest in our district. And we have some local champions who are going to talk to us in just a moment about the work that has been done since we did our first update to the board back in October. And so, I'd like to invite two champions in our community. Dr. Carol Montague-Davis, who is, I call her principal emeritus, right? She was a principal at Carver, and she has been a, see, community, Assistant Superintendent, Community Champion, love of children and our school system. And we also have Alvin Atkinson, most recently retired from community engagement work with Winston-Salem State University, along with Dana Cottle-Jones, who is former board member, community member, champion for our children. And then also Ms. Jan Atkinson, who has been with us along the way. So, we've had a small group, along with our school system staff, small community groups, who've been talking about what could this look like. And so, they're going to provide the rest of the update on what has happened since October, since the last board. So, please come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. My name's Alvin Atkinson, and as I was introduced, as a recent retiree from Winston-Salem State University. Glad to see a couple of folks that I know from my time in this community, over 40 years. So, what I'm here to share is really what was done in terms of the work that this effort came off the ground. And I was glad to hear someone speak on the foundation effort and their support for it. And so, we actually, as we were engaged, to look at what's happening in our state with school districts. And this is not new. There are many school districts in our state who have a foundation. They do differ by what their primary area of focus is on. And we talked to a couple of them. One of them, we actually want to do a site visit to Asheville, you know, when the weather gets nice. But what we found is that it really is the community structure and how the district and this effort can really work together. Another school district that has a foundation is Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg. Charlotte has, you know, they're a bigger city than Winston-Salem. And they decided that their focus would really be on helping attract new teachers, particularly those teachers who were getting, were in another industry, but to get into the classroom in their priorities, in the STEMS, and getting sort of diversify their student, their teacher base. The other foundation we talked with was Durham, Durham Public Foundation. Durham, actually, a great approach in that they came, hit the ground running. They didn't have a lot of the foundations in their community like we have. And so, they were able to, to, over time, create a program that had three pillars. And I just wanted to share what they were. Investing in our people, fostering equity through innovation, and championing public education by building community support through increased enrollment. I'm going to let Ms. Montague-Davis come and talk a little bit more about where else and what has been done. But again, we're not trying to reinvent this wheel. It's already out there. We just need to make it Winston-Salem, how we want to do it.
Good evening, everyone. I know when Paula came up, when you called my name, but here I am, Carol. And last time you saw me, I didn't wear glasses. I've been retired for four, for a while, so now I'm wearing glasses. So, we're going to talk just a little bit about our vision. Because, you know, anything that you start, you have to have a vision of understanding where you want to go. And so, if you're not clear with a vision, it's hard for you to figure out where to go. So, we want to talk just a little bit about the vision of the foundation. Our vision of the collaborative foundation, we will focus on evidence-based practices that support improving outcomes for our schools. Evidence-based, not feel-good-based, not I hope it work-based, but evidence-based practices. We will also, the foundation board, working along with the superintendent and the district leader, will determine our priorities. You will determine what priorities we should address and what priorities, needs are need for. And you know, everything that you do have to be evaluated. So, evaluation outcomes will be a critical part of our success. We have to be able to show that the practices that we're doing and the priorities that we set are working. And we have to put some type of evaluation in, and it will be critical for our part. The collaboration foundation will serve as a 501(c)(3). It's been an extension of our community leaders, our donors, our educators, our parents, our students, and our district leaders. We want the whole representation of our population of our community to be represented in our 501(c)(3). The Winston-Salem Board of Ed will be able to nominate a permanent board member. So, we want to make sure that we have a permanent board member from the existing board, so that you will be able to represent your district interests, to make sure that your interests are there, and we're looking through it. And the superintendent will, the superintendent and the board chair will serve as the expositio for the board members. You will be a member at all times, but you will be able to oversee our 501(c)(3). So, what have we done so far since the last presentation of the board back in October 2022? We have worked with local consulting company to explore the needs and the processes for establishing a founding board. So, we have already worked with a consulting company for the needs of a founding board. We have explored the costs and the financially around enlisting an attorney to support with the 501(c)(3). Because the 501(c)(3) just don't happen. We need the attorney involved to make sure that we're following the right procedures, the right order, filling the right paperwork, so we have to make sure that's happening. We have worked with several community members and educators to enlist them to be board members. And we introduced some today. Thank you, Dana, for agreeing to be on the board. I think we were drafted, but drafted for a good cause. We were drafted for a good cause, and that is for students, because they know that my circle is the students in the middle, and every decision we make is going to be around that child, to make sure that we're making the right ones. We have established an initial overview document to share about the work of the foundation. Just want to show you this a minute. So, we have established this foundation, this brochure, just to talk a little bit about the foundation and what the works would be. Uh-oh. Paula, come on up and fix that for me. All right. Oh, Kevin? Good job, Kevin. I forgot that was that job back there. We have also secured a grant from Z. Smith Rental Foundation of $15,000 to help with the initial work. And these funds have been used to support the consulting collaboration work to help us, help us with the startup documents. So, we have secured $15,000. We're working with a consultant to help us with our documents, such as our article, our bylaws, and things like that that we need to have. So, you can see, a lot of work has been done since October the 22nd, when we first presented to the board. And a lot of you with new board members, this is probably your first time seeing this, just a little bit of details of what has been done. But a lot of work behind the scenes with some of the staff members here have done some great work so far of, of leading this process forward. So, we're trying to get our 501(c)(3), our foundation up, so that we can be able to meet the needs of our community when the money frees up. And Alvin's going to talk to you a little bit about our support that we're going to need from you.
All right. So, basically, pulling it all back together, you have received, there was a superintendent letter of support that was accepted, but we're mentioning that has been accomplished. We've actually revised the educational collaborative on the design so that we know we have full representation for the whole community involved with this and have begun identifying the initial board of members that you've heard. And we're going to actually really lean on you to nominate someone to be a part of this as we continue to shape this work. We have begun finalizing the seed funding and looking for an initial commitment. And I was, one of my investigations, you know, I looked at the size of a school district, and I saw how Winston-Salem, you know, was pretty much up there. We're above Durham, right? We have more. Well, Durham voted to give their organization to get started $75,000 to get this thing moving, because you got to get somebody on the ground to start connecting the dots and make it work. I don't know what amount you're going to have for, but I'm just saying Durham gave $75,000. That's all. All right? That's it. All right? And so, we are still working to make this happen in a way that we can move expeditiously, because there's so much work to be done. And a close relationship with the foundation and the school district will allow things to happen that we really need in our community. So, I'm hopeful that as you all get together and start looking at the dollars and cents, that remember what Durham did. All right? So, we'll stop there and ask for questions, if you have any. But remember, this is just more to update you and get it. And so, we may not have all the answers, but we'll give you what we know at this stage.
Great. Any questions?
Yeah, on the link that was on a previous slide that went to like a flyer or a handout, it said for Forsyth County Schools. Is there, is this specifically for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools? Is this for all public schools in Forsyth County?
This is, the way it works, it is, the partnership is with the district, and so, it has a strong bias towards district students. However, if you're in the county and there is an opportunity for this effort to help someone, but it has to be voted on by this board, and you all have representation there. So, because we do want to be inclusive, and we know not all students are in public schools. But if there's a need, we have to find a way to make, meet that need. This could be a bridge, but that has to be determined by the board. And we're not that board to answer how that will be done. That is a consideration.
Okay.
So, my question, so what is the title? Do we have a title for the foundation?
Excuse me. I think our initial start for the 501(c)(3) was to service our school system when the money frees up. Because when the money's gone from ESER, we're going to need grant money and stuff to continue our priorities that we have to meet. And so, right now, we are in the process of starting a logo along with the board overview to look to see where we're going. But we do not have official title yet. Am I right?
Okay.
We are working on all of that. We do not have an official title yet. We are just starting the work in the process. We'll catch up. But you will have input, because you have a permanent member. The superintendent and the board chair will be ex officio members. So, you will have oversee, that's what that means. You'll be have oversee of our 501(c)(3). But we're looking to figure out how we can be a foundation in the community that can raise money for our priorities that we have to meet our objectives and the things that we need to meet for our students with practice, research-based practices that we can evaluate at the end to see if what we have done is effective. So, that's what we are looking for right now. That's what we're starting. But if the board decides that they want the branch to do more, that would be a decision that would be made at that time. I hope I answered that question.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Andrew Kraft, our Chief Accountability Officer, will discuss the 2022-2023 retesting program.
Thank you, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent. So, I want to let you know about a program that, with your permission, we're going to execute. Hope Tash is here in the room with me. Hope serves as our executive director for testing for the district, and she and her team would oversee the execution of this pending your approval. So, let me help you understand this. DPI does not call this retesting. They're very particular about the term. This is a summer program, and after the end of the summer program, you can readminister the EOGs and EOCs. They say there is no policy that allows for retesting. Most districts like ours refer to it as retesting. So, if you read the DPI memo, didn't want there to be confusion for you there. So, I want to help you understand why we propose to have this, who's eligible, when it will occur, and some other details along the way. The summer retesting program allows for students that were not proficient on the EOG or the EOC to get remediation. And if they attend that remediation, then they can retake the EOG or the EOC for which they were not proficient. So, that's, that's who would participate in this. Participation is completely optional, okay? And only students that attend that remediation, so that first day of the summer program, which is when remediation is provided, only those students that attend that remediation can come back and take the EOG or EOC that they were not proficient in. So, here's our proposal for the timeline. We would, we would provide remediation to students on June 12th, and then we would provide an opportunity to retake the EOG or EOC that they were not proficient in on June 13th and 14th. You see all the options there, that students would have the opportunity to retake. Four through eight ELA, three through eight math, the science EOGs as well, and then the EOCs are listed. You'll note that there's an asterisk next to English 2, because there's a written component to English 2 that has to get scored by hand. Those scores don't come back quick enough for us to offer retesting to our high school students that take English 2 in the second semester. Transportation is provided for students that opt to participate in this summer program, and child nutrition is provided. So, that's a great benefit for our students and their families. So, we will be maintaining all testing code of ethics during this. All test administrators will be trained. There will be a trained test coordinator on each campus. And per DPI... And per DPI, all of these tests must be administered online. So we're accustomed to administering online, so that won't be a huge change for us. So I'll entertain any questions. I just let you know that we have done this before. And what this does is it allows schools to get that bump of, you know, anywhere 5% to 10%, depending on how students do on that retesting opportunity. What's unique this year is our high school principals wanted to do it this year. We haven't done it in high schools before, but our high school principals overwhelmingly did want to do it. So we're proposing to add high school to our retesting this year. So are there any questions? Yes, sir. Scotts?
Andrew, could you please explain a little more of the why-
Thanks.
-of this happening at this point? And how it relates to accountability and a testing model?
Yeah, thank you. I think I did go over that a little too quickly. Why, why would a high school principal want to have this happen? The answer is they can get a bump in their school performance grade. So if a child is proficient, if they demonstrate proficiency in the retest, that will be added to the school performance grade. And so they're likely to get a bump in their school performance grade if students will opt to come in and take this test for the second time. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So I've been approached by some, some teachers who have some reservations about doing this. We didn't do it last year, is that correct?
We did not. That is correct.
And why are we, why did we decide to do it this year?
Sure. So it goes back to that, the bump that can be realized in the school performance grade that, you know, overwhelmingly principals, principals want to take advantage of it. It puts our district and our schools at a slight competitive disadvantage if we don't, because most districts in the state do participate.
They do? Okay. And you said, high school principals overwhelmingly wanted it. What about middle school?
Sure. Elementary, middle wanted it. They've wanted it in the past. They continue to want it again this year. What was different this year was the fact that so many high school principals wanted to add it as well.
So it's a pretty clear majority of schools that want to do it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Lastly, Kimberly Forbes, the Executive Director of CTE, will present and discuss the contract with Habitat for Humanity.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. Want to share with you a little bit, this contract impacts our carpentry career pathway that we offer currently at the Career Center. There are, it is a four-course sequence for this pathway, for students to be considered a major in this pathway. But much like the speaker, I'm like, she could have come up here and presented for y'all this. It provides experiential learning for our students, but gives them also a pride in what they're doing and contributing to the community. And that, that service learning piece of it, that's a part of education. The students that are participating, the carpentry one, two, and three students are participating in this for a total of 47 students that have an opportunity to help build the house. The completed project will be sold by the Habitat for Humanity. Peter Manktalo is our carpentry instructor at the Career Center. He is the one that is supervising the work while it is being conducted. And I put down a little bit of the cost. Our contribution with the school system is $50,000. But once that house is sold, we receive it back, and we are able to put it back in for the materials for the next house. But to stress that the Habitat for Humanity is the owner of the house. Let's see. That was quick.
Any questions?
Just one, not really a question, just elaboration. This is not a new project, but please elaborate how long we've been doing this in the district?
Well, you know, I'm new here, so I don't, I don't have the history. I know it's been done in the past. It has been a tradition. It was halted during the pandemic. And so this is our first step back into it since then. But this has been a tradition to participate in this with Habitat for Humanity for a good number of years.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the MOA with the City of Winston-Salem. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So we have a motion by Board Member Miller?
Second.
A second by Board Member Tribonia Brown Gaither? Do we have any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, consider approval of the contract with Habitat for Humanity. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, great. So we have a motion from Board Member Crowley. We have a second from Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we do not, okay. So anyway, so do we have a, do we, do we have an action item for the retesting? Because I don't see it. Okay, 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 great. Okay, all right, thanks. Well, our next order of business is announcements. Tuesday, February 28th will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on almost anything, let me say to our Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching, and Happy Valentine's Day. This will conclude our broadcast. And at this time, we will open our meetings to those who have signed up to comment.